Good evening and welcome to the Mill Creek Township School District Committee meetings for Monday, January the 13th, 2025. First meeting this evening will be the Instruction and Student Services Committee followed by the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting, including with the Finance and Operations Committee. There will also be a committee for the whole meeting this evening following the committee meetings. While we encourage the public to attend in person, all meetings will be streamed live on YouTube and be recorded for future viewing purposes. You can also view this evening's agenda as well as several additional informational items on our website, www.mtsd.org. In addition, please visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Mill Creek Township School District. I'd also like to remind all speakers, core team members, and board members to speak clearly and distinctly into their microphones so you can be heard by all of our attendees this evening, whether they are here in person or viewing us on YouTube. Again, this evening's committee, during each of the committee meetings, we provide an opportunity for Mill Creek Township residents and taxpayers to ask questions regarding any item listed on the agenda for the committee meetings. Same protocol applies to all individuals who wish to address the board. For asking a question, please indicate which agenda item you are asking about. The committee chair will review this at the appropriate time during their committee meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. We appreciate your input and feedback. First committee meeting this evening is Instruction and Student Services. Mrs. Winchell.
Thank you. Item 1.01 is roll call. Attorney Senate, please.
Mrs. Winchell.
Here.
Mrs. Philback.
Here.
Mrs. Newsom.
Here.
Thank you. 1.02 is approval of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 2.01, I'd like to make a motion to approve the committee meeting minutes of November 11th for the Instruction and Student Services Committee. You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. I have 13 action items this evening to discuss and take to the board meeting at the end of the month. Item 3.01, course title changes.
Yeah, so as we go through every year and we update our scheduling guide for the high school, these are title changes for courses. They're very minor, but these have been recommended by the departments and department chairs. I've gone through the guidance department and the principals as well in an attempt to more clearly outline the matriculation of courses and get students motivated to take them.
Thank you. 3.02, the new course called Mental Fitness.
Yeah, maybe I'll just cover the next five if that's okay with you. They're all new course recommendations. 3.02 is a course called Mental Fitness. This will be taught by the Social Studies Department, and this is a follow-up to the Positive Psychology course, which has been extremely popular, getting students to think about resilience and grit, but also just the way that human psychology grapples with positivity in the world around them. So this will be a follow-up course to that, so we're excited that there's a matriculation sequence now for that. 3.03 is SAT prep. This would be co-taught by an English teacher and a math teacher, and it's exactly what it says. We haven't had a course like this for a little while, so we're excited to bring this back. 3.04 is foundational study skills. This would be a recommendation-only course. You'd have to be recommended by a teacher or a guidance counselor, and this is exactly what it says. Study skills for students who need the extra assistance. This is not for students who have IEPs. There are special ed courses that fill that need for them, but we realize that there are some students who still need an extra boost in their academic studies here. So this would be a recommendation course for them. And the next two are new art courses. 3.06 is creative sketchbooking and, or excuse me, 3.05 is experimental markmaking, and 3.06, creative sketchbooking, a new art course is designed for students who have no art skills or maybe even a propensity to begin with, to sort of lower the defenses even more and just get them interested in doing something with art and then building from there.
Okay, that takes us up to 3.07, Advanced Placement Summer Institute for AP Human Geography.
Also excited to bring this course back. It's been a number of years since we've had AP Human Geography. This is a great introductory course for students to the AP world. It's a course that's recommended at the sophomore level, but even freshmen have the ability to take it and be very successful with this course. So to have somebody teach that, certainly we need them to be trained. So we want to send one of our teachers to the AP Summer Institute specifically for AP Human Geography. And if I may segue then into 3.08, that is an AP Summer Institute for AP Research. That course has been so popular, we're looking at having two teachers teach that in the upcoming year. This teacher has been shadowing the present teacher, and the intention would be for them to have a section of it next year as well. So we want them to be sufficiently trained. You'll notice that in 3.08, we do say TBD on the place. They have not released those dates yet for the AP Seminar or the AP Research Summer Institute, but we're worried that when they do, if it's at an awkward timing with, say, the February board meetings, that that might fill up before we can come through the full month approval process. So we're asking you to approve that trip. The costs are estimated based on the AP Human Geography trip, which those costs have been released. So if you'd be willing to do that, that would help us to make sure that that teacher could in fact enroll in that course.
Thank you. 3.09 is the International Society for Technology and Education Conference.
Yes, further preparing for next year's Year of Technology, which we know will be our PD and student focus. This is the third conference and sort of the tertiary approach that we've been taking in sending our administrators and our teachers to be trained in deep technology expertise. You know that we've sent folks to the state-level conference, we've sent folks to the national-level conference. They're there right now in Orlando, Florida, and this is the international conference. It takes place in the middle of summer down in San Antonio, Texas. Each one of those conferences have distinct focuses. This one is sort of, I don't want to say the biggest and best of them all, but it really is. There are tracks here that cannot be found at the other two conferences. There are speakers here, there are cohorts here that are extremely deep. So we're very excited to have this opportunity to send folks to this in the summertime.
Thank you. 3.10 is the AFJROTC Agreement.
These are the typical agreements that our Air Force Junior ROTC program operates on. They're simply up for review, so we would ask you to approve those.
Okay, and two more agreements follow that.
Point Park University affiliation, as we have with so many other universities, this is for student placement. So if somebody was doing an undergrad or a graduate program where they needed practicum hours, student teaching hours, they would have the ability to do that on our campus.
Okay, and 3.12, the Interpreting Services Agreement.
So 3.12 is a one-year contract with USCRI. They provide translation services for a number of languages for our multi-language families.
And finally, 3.13, the Project Search 2526. Wow, 2526 calendar.
Yes, 3.13 is the Proposed 2526 Project Search Calendar. Project Search is our partnership program with UPMC for our students with disabilities to prepare for employment post-high school. The calendar includes 180 days and 1,080 hours.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move items 3.01 to 3.13 to the board meeting later this month. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion from anyone about any of those items, 3.01 through 3.13?
I really liked the new courses. They look really good.
And excited for that International Technology Conference. That sounds wonderful. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor to taking these items to the meeting at the end of the month, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are into information items. 4.01, McDowell Updates. We'll be talking about cell phones, credits, and schedule.
We'd like to welcome the high school principals for that, Scott Quibby and Sandy Means. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. We're very excited to share these couple of updates that have been tremendously successful for us so far this school year. There we go. We'll go the right way. So first part, we're going to dive right into the cellphone policy update. And so about a couple of weeks ago, we went and surveyed all of our staff on their thoughts, a couple of different types of questions here, on how things have been going with our new cellphone policy update. Students having their cellphones often in their lockers from the start of the instructional day to the end of the instructional day. At the top left, you can see that we ended up with 114 responses between the teachers in two buildings, which is a pretty high percentage of our teachers. And in these Likert scales that you're going to see on there, they're not all listed necessarily, but five is the positive end, one is the negative end of those questions. And so, starting with, as you can see, the consistency of the enforcement of the policy, and more importantly, the implementation, changes in student behavior during these classes has been extremely positive. You can see almost exclusively five enforced. We're going to have some quotes at the end, and I won't read them to you, but they're there for you to look at, and some of those things that we're hearing from our teachers. While this survey took place a couple of weeks ago, we started within the first weeks of school having conversations casually, informally with staff councils about what they were seeing, how things were going, are there adjustments that need to be made? So this is something that's kind of been on our mind, on the plate for the entire start of the school year, but just gathered this information here recently. And if you look at the bottom right, you know, your ability to teach effectively, you can see, what is that, 98.2% said this is a very positive impact in their ability to teach. And just a couple other ones here that kind of came with this. Again, student engagement. When we introduced this idea last spring, our whole goal and motivation behind doing this was student focus, learning, engagement, collaboration. That is what we wanted for our students. That's what we wanted for our teachers and for our classrooms. And as you can see again on the top left, a very overwhelming majority of our teachers feel this has had a great impact in their classroom. The information on the top right there, we wanted to give them a chance to say if there's been challenges, what are those? We made a slight mistake in the implementation of the survey. About the first 30 or so respondents got through without the bottom choice of no challenges. And in the comment section, as we read through in the beginning, as they started pouring, people said, "Well, I put a challenge down, but I don't have any, but I had to answer it to go on." And we quickly added in the no challenges part. But the two that are on there is what I would expect to see is, you know, a little bit of resistance from the students or the difficulty in monitoring, that can still exist and still does exist. It will never be zero. But an overall majority, and I think we would have seen even more, put no challenges had we had that response on there right from the beginning. And the very bottom, again, summing up the overall effectiveness of the policy, extremely, extremely strong response from the teachers that they're in support of this policy, they love this policy. I'm going to kind of go right into, and again, I won't read these to you, but if you look at some of these quotes, this is really what has kind of driven, you know, our motivation to continue with this and to move this forward. The conversations with teachers, you know, within the first few weeks, we had teachers come up states, it's just lighter in the classroom. There's, it's a little bit easier to talk to the kids. And then as it carried on, the participation, the collaboration, just even walking between classes when we're not seeing kids with their heads up, having conversations, engaging with each other, where they used to walk with their head down, earbuds in, they wouldn't notice you passed them. You couldn't even say hi to half of the students. So this has been extremely, extremely important. And one of the quotes in here, I don't even see where it is, it's saying that this is the biggest single thing, if they had to point out, that administration has done to help with student learning and engagement. And I think that really kind of says it all when you look at what's on here. Conversations with counselors, they've told us the amount of time in their day where they are dealing with a lot less drama. Kids coming in crying upset about what someone said or how it was said or where they saw it and what happened. You know, those have been really, really positive again for us from every level. And we had conversations, maybe, there we go, with some of our student groups, Student Advisory Council. I forget the exact name of yours.
Yes, Student Advisory Council.
Did the same thing in both buildings. And these are just, again, a couple of their quotes that they gave us as we had the conversation about what are they seeing? And every quote we got from a student wasn't always the positive. There's still some students who feel they should have their phones. We're not hiding that fact from anyone. I'm sure that's not a surprise. But most of them have said, like, I have felt more focused. I have had the ability to kind of pay more attention to class and not thinking about what's happening outside of the classroom or on my phone during the day when I know I don't have a chance to look at it until the end of that day comes. We see it in lunch. We see it, like I said, in the hallways, those social parts. And we've even seen those carried over to when they're leaving at the end of the day even. I don't see kids getting their phone out when you'd think they'd all run to their phones and all come out on their phone looking at it, and you don't see that. It's almost starting to become a little bit more ingrained, and that's what we're hoping to see as we went along with this process. And the very last part, while this wasn't a reason that we And the very last part, while this wasn't a reason that we put this together, you know, to share with you what the discipline that has shown. You can see if you look at the top left, you know, 23-24 school year, 184 events with 140 students. It's not surprising to us that this year we have had more events with more students as we have worked our way into this policy. But we took a little bit of a deeper dive into what is that data showing us and telling us? Two trends that we saw that came from it. Number one, the significant increase is really in repeat offenders. Okay, we're seeing a handful of students who had really, really struggled with the idea that I have to separate from my phone. And I would call it an addiction that we fight with some of our students that we've seen. But really, if you look at the bottom left, it takes a little time for policies like this to take hold. But if you look month by month, what's happening with those infractions, they're going down every single month. And with a significant drop in December, yes, it's a slightly shorter time span with the holidays, but still per day, much lower than what we've been seeing. It is becoming the norm, it is becoming the expectation, it is becoming students policing themselves, which is what we had really hoped to see, that they enjoy this experience and this is what they actually want.
Just a comment from that, everything that Scott had up there that we worked on together, it's amazing what the teachers are sharing. And it's amazing what we see in the classroom, it's amazing what we see in the hallways. You know, one teacher said, I don't have to repeat the directions three, four, or five times, and they're engaging and they're talking and they're not looking for the phones buzzing in their pocket. And I think one of the things that's really important is our social emotional learning. We don't have the drama that something was posted on Snapchat or Instagram that they're looking at during the school day, and that's been insignificant. So it's been a positive, it's still a work in progress, and we enjoy getting feedback from staff and students, and we'll keep working on that and see where we need to keep improving.
Just a quick comment related to that. I would like to commend you for having the courage to go ahead and do that. You know, you were right out in front doing it. And there are a lot of schools and school districts that are now following suit. But you were the trailblazer, and I commend your courage.
Yes, I'm sure I don't speak for Sam. We both have gotten a lot of questions from some of our neighboring administrators about what we've done, how we've done it. What is the path we took? What process would we recommend? And I wouldn't be surprised to see this really spreading across the region very, very.
I would say there are IU meetings of 17 superintendents. At least half, if not more, have said, we want to know about the process. And that's why they're getting the calls, because I would say the majority of the districts are going to go in this direction very soon.
Sandy and Scott, I just mentioned, and I'm going to bring this up during the COW meeting, but one of the items, IU V Updates. I have an attachment for the Board Director's comments, and he always attaches great articles. And there's two articles this month. Cellphone Policy Enhances Student Focus and Learning. There's another link to No One Size Fits All Cellphone Policy for the US Department of Education. So if you have a chance, take a look at that and like reinforce what you're doing.
For sure, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for that feedback. Before we move on to the next one, I did have a question along the same lines. Are we thinking about ever allowing a student to bring a personal laptop back, ever?
Well, so at this point, with teachers using Google Classroom and putting quizzes through Google Forms, the only way to control that is through our own devices, because they can't lock it when students have their own personal device and they're connecting to it. It's gone really well, that's been another positive. Teachers have said, you know, we can control the devices now. We can see what they're doing on their computers through our computers. We can lock the quizzes when they're done. So we do have a Bring Your Own Device policy that they can fill out a form if they need it for a class such as AP Research. And then we can sign off on that, they can bring their own device for that class specifically. But across the board, just to bring their own device, we haven't had a lot of requests for it. And we don't really see the need for it at this point.
I just look at, if we want to be on the cutting edge, you're not going to use a Chromebook in college. Teach these kids how to use Windows and Excel and PowerPoint, not Google Sheets and Google Forms.
Some of those specifics, so I think of like our graphics design lab and where we get into all that. And they have, you know, they have desktops in there for that purpose that have the correct software. They just purchased, I think it was last year, they have these giant screens. And I was in there for an animation class the other day. And so in those areas, we are providing then what is needed outside of the Chromebook to have the ability for some of those particular courses. And as Mrs. Means said, if we see a need arise in an AP Research, in a specific, potentially a journalism, something like that, where we need to have something else, then that's where that form has come into play. If we really feel, if a teacher comes and says, I don't think I can do what the curriculum needs me to do with this device, then we're going to have to find another way to do it. So we're not completely closed out to the idea. But I agree with Mrs. Means, when we talk about just the general idea of just allowing to bring your own device, we open right back up into some of those things that this policy was designed not to allow to happen.
Understood, thank you.
That too is a bigger district conversation, you know, and with tech, do we want to stay with Chromebooks? Should we be using Microsoft Surface, you know, iPads and look and see what other districts are offering? That would be a bigger conversation, but we, something we would certainly support with that.
And since it's relevant, that's one of the things that we're launching actually right now. And in the next couple of weeks is a strategic planning process specifically related to IT. We've consulted with other superintendents from around the state on what's been a successful framework for that. And we have one identified that we're excited about, that a number of larger school districts have really spoken highly of. So using that framework, in other words, is eliminating guesswork. We take a framework from a nationally recognized organization that other districts now have used and spoken very highly of. And not just one year, but sometimes two and three iterations. And that's one of the things that we're starting these next couple of weeks, so you'll be hearing about that soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Murnik, as you look at that, you can still manage it with the Chromebook if the IT department can create virtual computer labs where you can log into the stronger computer that you need. I know we do that a lot of times at the higher ed level, where a lot of our engineering and graphics software is beyond what a personal device would even be able to carry. But you can remote into those devices. That may be a solution where you could still have the utility of a Chromebook, but you would have potentially 40 desktops that are properly powered that you can remote serve into.
Great point, thank you.
So earlier this fall, we presetted graduation requirements that we were doing some research and looking across the state. So we just wanted to update you today just where we are in our research and in the process. So as you know, McDowell requires 28 credits for graduation. And you can just see there, four for math, English, Social Studies, three and a half for science, two for PE and one for health. And then we have 9.5 electives for our 28 credits. PDE requirements, they require 21 credits, and those are posted up there. English and PE, by PDE standards, should be taught every year in grades nine through 12. And when we talk about Social Studies, a History and Government of the United States in Pennsylvania is required. So what we're doing is, we're looking at schools. This slide shows us schools that are similar to McDowell. And these would be Pennsylvania school districts that are similar based on a combination of enrollment, low income percentage, and total actual budget expense. And the number on the very left, it's a little bit hard to see up there, but the number on the left is the US News and World Report ranking is where they rank. So we're taking a look at their credits. And the schools that are most similar to us average 24.7 credits total. And then just going across, you can see math is about three credits, three credits for science, 3.3 for Social Studies. And then on the end, we see that some schools have already implemented mandatory financial literacy, which we are starting next year for our graduates. And every junior or senior will have that before they graduate in their senior year. So those are schools that are similar to us. So we're taking a look at their recommendations, what they're doing, where they rank. We're looking at all their data, including their schedule. And then we took it a step further, and we looked at local and then Western PA, Central PA, and Eastern PA, some schools, and also some top-ranked schools within the top 20 and in the top 50. And then you could see our local in blue. And when we look at those schools, they averaged 25 to 26 credits. And then we're also noting electives are down from ours. Some are requiring STEM, some require Arts and Humanities, where that could be a world language class. And a little bit different with their HP and the way they give credits. So what we're noticing when we look at all of those schools, our PA schools in our study require an average of 25 credits. Most of the schools require three math and three science credits. They average six to seven elective credits. And something we found interesting is an option that they have for what they call a flex credit or a swing credit. So if they require three math and three science, and it's a student that's very interested in a particular field, maybe they want to study physics, they want to go into engineering, they have the opportunity to take another science course for that fourth credit or an extra math course. If they're very interested in history, they could take an extra history course. So they call it a swing credit or flex credit, or some schools say you have to take one or two more core electives. So you need to pick from math, science, or social studies for those two extra electives. Just allows flexibility for what students are most interested in and where they're tending to go in their post-secondary studies. Some miscellaneous requirements we noted were culminating portfolios, a graduation project, college and career readiness class or career planning class, financial literacy as previously mentioned. Some schools are requiring a computer science class and some are requiring a STEM course. As part of this, we're looking at expanding our dual enrollment in our college and high school programs. So right now, we do have dual enrollment with local universities that students participate in, and they can earn elective credit. What we're looking to do beginning next year is expand our program. And the credits that the students take in English and Social Studies, if it matches up with ours, so example, an academic writing course or an academic literature course, a US history course. Say they go to Gannon and they take US Government and Politics, that would also count for a high school credit. They're taking the government at Gannon and not at McDowell. So that across the state and locally is something that most of the schools do, as well as we're expanding, and we've not done this before, it's called College and High School, CHS Program. And most of our local schools do that with Robert Morris University. So we're exploring that, where students can take that class right at McDowell with a McDowell teacher and have the option of earning credits through RMU. So that's a new program that we're looking into and will be starting next year. When I said expanding dual enrollment programs with local universities, we're in discussion of what that will look like. Sometimes students take a dual enrollment and they're not sure what to take, they're just taking a class to take it, and not quite sure if that's really the path they want to go on. So we are looking to get students started in their junior year on a solid path, earning credits. So it would be English credits, it would be Social Studies credits. We're looking at developing some tracks with local universities. If the student's interested in engineering, they can take that English, they can take that Social Studies, and then they'll be able to take some engineering entry-level courses. If they're interested in healthcare, it'd be healthcare interest, entry-level courses. So not so much, you know, random, we're still going to allow that flexibility for students, but we're also going to develop some tracks so they know what to take and they can get started. We're also exploring the possibility, would it ever be possible for our McDowell students to possibly start an associate degree in their junior year? Could that be almost finished by the end of their senior year if they took some classes in the summer? So we really are looking to expand those opportunities for students to take as many post-secondary classes as they can while in high school and to get a good start. And we're also expanding training and career participation through trade schools and other local organizations. We now have an agreement with NOLI Noonan, and we have some students who have started in that this year. And it's just amazing that we're out ahead of the training and things they want to do post-secondary. So, you know, we really need to, as a district and as a school community, ask ourselves, how do we determine what is essential for our graduates? And, you know, what is, what is good for Melkrick is not necessarily the same thing that someone's doing in the other part of the state or in Pittsburgh or even here locally. So I'm not going to read all the questions, but just some things we're considering and we're asking ourselves and we're asking our school community. What skills and knowledge should every McDowell graduate possess to succeed in college careers and life? And that goes hand in hand with our portrait of a graduate. So we did a lot of that work and we looked at those skills. What feedback are we getting from stakeholders in our school community? And what are they telling us about essential competencies for graduates? We're looking at the local, state, and national trends, and should those inform our decisions about graduate credit requirements? How do our current requirements prepare students for what's next, that post-secondary pathway, whether it's technical training, workforce readiness, or college? We are now looking at the National, the Student National Clearinghouse, where we can track our students who enter college and see how many are graduating in four years or five years? How many are finishing, or are they staying beyond a semester or one year? You know, how can we better prepare for what's next, not only college, but workforce as well? And a few final questions, you know, should we require a STEM credit with where we are now with Career Pass? You know, and that would be a long list of different things they could take. We have a lot of computer science, we have industrial tech classes and different things. So is that something we should require? Do we have any gaps in our requirements, something that we're missing? Are we sure that we are flexible with our credit requirements, but yet maintaining that consistency and rigor? How could our elective courses impact our, and shape our credits and our students' journey? And then what data do we have from graduate success rates to state comparisons that really should drive this shift, if any? You know, when we're done, it may be, yes, we're going to stick with 28 credits, but we're going to align it a little bit different. Maybe we're going to add that STEM credit. Maybe we're going to add a swing credit that students can take a class in something they're a little more interested in. So just looking at a lot of things, but these are the questions that we're asking ourselves and asking our faculty and our school community. Any questions before I move on about where we are in our research?
This looks great, I love it. I like the idea that you're going to track our high school students when they graduate and see how successful they are, where they go, and what path they take, and how.
I think that's important.
I agree, I agree.
I think the whole idea of them getting, of students getting a head start on an associate program or on a college, a set of college classes is very good. First of all, they'll never get college credits any less expensive than that.
Yeah, correct.
But it's more than that. It's more understanding of what is a college course compared to, you know, what I'm used to. Oh, great ideas, lots, lots of questions to answer.
So hand in hand with that also, you know, when we're looking at the credits, we're also looking at our schedule. We've been on a block schedule for a while with 80 minutes. So we're doing some high school schedule research with this. So after the, really the past two and a half to three years, our administration at MIHS and at McDowell Senior High have been researching and doing, having different considerations about schedules. So we participated, the six of us, in an online scheduling institute, also with Dr. Kavanaugh, and to study best practices in scheduling. And boy, there are so many different schedules, it just boggles our mind. Things are crazy, but really interesting things. We have surveyed our students and faculty to gather input on current scheduling needs and preferences. And for the last two and a half years, we've been presenting different schedules to our student advisory councils, to our faculty, at our faculty lead councils, they take it back, department chairs to their department, they discuss it, they look at it, they bring feedback. We talk about what would work, what would not work. We've looked at things, block AB schedule, a traditional seven, eight, or nine-period day, a five-period, different models and modules, and currently looking at a trimester schedule. So we get feedback, we come back, this will work, this won't work. You know, is a 43-day, 43-minute class period really enough from where going from 80 minutes? What we're learning from many of our teachers and our students is that sweet spot seems to be 60 to 65 minutes. So just part of our research we're doing with the scheduling. And we talked about why are we looking at these schedules? We want to be sure that we're enhancing those learning opportunities and flexibility for students, also incorporating their wellness and their student engagement, addressing concerns that the 80-minute periods really not will be the best for all students. And when we have 2,100 or 2,200 students, we've noticed over the last probably five to seven years, their attention spans have really changed. You know, they're used to being on their phone, they're used to immediate answers and quick things. And sitting in an 80-minute class sometimes for the majority of our students is pretty difficult. We want to align with research on the adolescent learning and brain development, and that's what I was talking about with time on task and attention spans. And we want to be sure that we're optimizing instructional time, that we don't have any empty instructional minutes within that 80-minute block or that 65-minute block. We'd like to increase access to electives and pathways for college and career readiness and provide opportunities for remediation and enrichment. So when we're looking at schedules, where can we get the remediation? Where can we get some enrichment? Where are we accommodating those growing interests in dual enrollment or internships or career experiences? And be sure that we're supporting just equal and equitable access to all learning activities or opportunities for our students. And really, the bottom one is our schedule aligning with our mission and our vision to provide the best possible educational experience. So it goes hand in hand with our study about our credits. And it's ongoing research, no decisions have been made. I think one of the best things is when Scott and I get information, we're really just involving all our stakeholders. It's amazing to hear through our student advisory council and our student advisory groups, their opinions, what they believe about instructional minutes, what they believe about credits, and then teachers. And we had a faculty meeting today, one we're studying right now. We had rolled out through the department chairs, they gave feedback, but we did an activity today and presented more information about it. They worked in groups, they collaborated. We came back, we have different posters and things that we're going to use for our next meeting. So both of this, uh, these ideas are ongoing and just to kind of keep you updated as to where we are. Any questions about that?
Are you looking to change schedules in the next year?
It wouldn't be next year. Yeah, so we're in year three right now. So we're hoping this spring possibly to be making a decision. And then if so, it would be the following school year. If we're not ready to make that decision, there's no need to rush. We'll stick with what we have until we're certain that we have the right schedule. We want to have a long kind of runway, once we make the schedule, for any curriculum that may need to be tweaked and to really think through and put it in place properly.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Four point, yep, do you want to continue with four point zero two?
I'm ready for four point zero two, yep.
Okay, McDowell targeted school improvement designation. Thank you.
Yeah, so just briefly to fill you in, this is something, uh, last winter, at this time, we were notified that we were identified as a school for targeted school improvement. We spent the spring and into the summer, we put together a committee. We came up with a plan to address those concerns, uh, put together some action plans. We are in the midst this year of enacting those ideas to try and address the concerns that were brought up, um, uh, through that information. Now, just in December, again, we were notified that we are now, uh, again, identified as a TSI school for the following school year, even though, of course, we're still in the midst of putting together the action plan and working through what we've done this year. And I just want to take a second to briefly share with you kind of where this comes from. And, and I don't want to say that we are not concerned, we know that our work will never be done. There is always improvements for us to make, there's always gains for us to have. But to kind of give you an idea of what does that mean when you hear, okay, a second year in a row, should we be concerned? And so the first, it's a multi-step process, the very beginning of the process is they look at every student group we have, whether we're talking demographic, whether we're talking special ed students, whether we're talking M L L students, all of our different student groups, say, are there any of these groups, us as a whole or any of those groups individually, we're not meeting what the, the school or the P D feels is kind of that minimum baseline? It all starts with looking at proficiency and growth of students on our testing. And so the very beginning, this year when we qualified, and same as last year, we qualified based on one particular student group, and those are our special ed students. And the starting point is to look at their proficiency rating. And if you fall within certain categories, you start to move on to the next level of this. This, for the next school year where we were just identified, anything less than 22.3% got to start into that. We were at about 21%, so just under that number. One thing I find interesting, I look back and just picked spring of 2024, our most recent, and looked at, okay, where, if this is where we fall, how does that compare? So in literature in the spring of 2024, our special ed students had a proficiency rating of 28.6. It sounds low, the state was 18.3, so 10% above the state average. For algebra, our proficiency rating was 15.0, but again, for the state, 8.6. So we are well above the state average and where we're at with those numbers, just to kind of give you a comparison, a thought tool for that. From there, they look at our growth index. Our growth index has been very, very strong over the last four to five years, every year having a positive growth, except for one year back in 2023. There was an anomaly there that, uh, kind of is the second reason that we fall within this realm and we're able to qualify, even with that lower proficiency rating compared to the numbers. With a, with a positive growth rate, we still would remain out of the TSI. But that one year will continue to come back and hit us again and again in the way that they do those. So really, those two things simply move us to the next step of the process. And this will kind of the, the determining part to whether you qualify. And there's one reason we qualify past this, and that is our graduation rate for our special ed students. The interesting part here is the state will admit this is not really the way it should be done. So I took a little deeper dive into the numbers. This is based off of our graduation rate from the 22, 23 school year. Overall, as a district, our graduation rate was 92.4%. That's good. Our special ed graduation rate was 76.9%. And you look at it and say, that doesn't seem right. Well, there was a hundred and four students that were part of that group. Eighty graduate, 24 did not graduate. But of that 24, 16 of those were involved in either project search, artistic skills classroom, or our, or our life skills support classroom. That is, so if you take those numbers, you put those 16 back into that group, our graduation rate for our special ed would be 92.3% within point one percent of our overall graduation rate. When you talk to, um, the state, I had a meeting with one of the state representatives and kind of shared that, so we've said, yes, we went to the federal government, said, this should really be a seven-year cohort we're looking at, not a four and a five year because of this, and they said, we don't care, we're going to stick with this. So while it's important to recognize, we still have work to do. We want our graduation rate to be 100%. So we're going to continue to look at when we're missing, why are we missing, where are we missing? There are some positives planned, it really forces you to go back through and evaluate your data. And what is it telling us and where are there action steps that we can make? We still have plenty of growth that we can make in multiple different areas, not just looking at special ed students, but looking at every student. And part of this process forces us not to look just at the specific data we qualify for, but look at all of our strengths and all of our weaknesses and develop more plans based off that. Those are things that we do every year. This year, again, we'll fit it into their TSI designation, we'll present it back to you to let you know what we're working on. A lot of those action steps you'll hear us develop coming through are going to be very similar to what we're doing right now because we're still in the process of gathering that data and really evaluating, analyzing what we're doing, the changes we made in this current year, are they having the effect that we want? Are we getting some growth where we need to have it? But that just kind of gives you an idea that while we're here, we fully admit we have work to do. To me, this designation is not as concerning as it may sound when you take a full dive into the data and the numbers that it comes from. Any questions on that? Thank you.
Thank you.
May I comment quickly before we move on? As you can see from hearing from both Mrs. Beans and Mr. Quibby this evening, there is a great deal going on at the high school level. So a special thank you to their leadership for looking at all aspects of all this, talking to their teachers, talking to their parents, talking to their students. A lot of stuff's going on for two or three years because there is no right or wrong decision. You want to make the best decision, and that's what they're aiming to do. So thank you to them.
Thank you. Information item 4.03, the dual enrollment programs update.
Yeah, so this just builds a little bit on what Mrs. Beans and Mr. Quibby were talking about with the dual enrollment program. So we currently have affiliation agreements with our four local universities for dual enrollment classes. And we also have a fifth provider, and that is the Regional Choice Initiative, which is administered by the IU out on the campus of Erie County Technical School. There are college professors that come to that campus and teach some of our students who are bused out to that campus, along with students from other high schools around the area. What we've heard from our students is that it's not as rich of a college experience as they would like. In other words, when we compare the Regional Choice Initiative, which is only high school kids on a satellite campus, that's not a university campus, to our on-campus dual enrollment programs, we consider the on-campus programs to be a richer and a deeper experience. Why? Because number one, those students are on the college campus. So they get to simply, you know, absorb the ethos of college life. But number two, and this is very important, the on-campus classes are specifically comprised of college students and high school students. In fact, uh, one of the, one of the universities had told me once that they had set a 50-50 threshold. They, they want to make sure that it is a 50% college student match to 50% high school match, specifically so that our students can get a better on-campus experience. So after a long contemplation, looking at various aspects of the program, and by the way, to quantify it, I believe we have 32 students currently add to the Regional Choice Initiative. What we would like to do is pivot from RCI to an on-campus provider. Uh, as I said, we've got dual enrollment agreements with all four local universities. Two of those universities, actually, um, well, there, there's a couple of developments now recently. So two of those universities have the same cost as RCI, which is $300 per course, and that would be Mercyhurst and Gannon. Penn State Baron is a little bit more expensive. And Penn West University now just recently, in the last couple of weeks, released that they're going to be a little bit cheaper. Penn West will have, uh, some online, some cyber courses that can be taken for dual enrollment, which is an exciting new development. And again, that was only just in the last couple of weeks, they will still also have on-campus dual enrollment. So what we want to ensure though is that transportation is not a barrier for any student. So the closest university that is equal cost to RCI would be Gannon University. So what we would like to do is take the bus that runs students to RCI every morning and have that bus run to Gannon University instead. It is the same cost for the student, uh, it actually ends up saving us a little bit of money because it's a shorter run. It won't obstruct anybody in transportation. The bus can run at a particular time and pick up at a particular time. So whether a student is taking one class or two classes, they all will have the option to get the bus. Students can continue to transport themselves, drive themselves if they want. And if a student wants to take a dual enrollment class at another university, again, those agreements aren't changing at all. Really what we're doing is we're, we're changing, we want to, to, again, as I said, pivot away from the place that we're transporting to, so that students can have that on-campus experience. So in addition to all of the other exciting changes that are coming with the dual enrollment program, this is one that we would like to put in place for next year as well.
Sounds wonderful. The next three items are related to field trips.
And these are relatively minor, so 4.04 is a new field trip for the esports program. And that would be in February on the campus of Penn West. The speech and debate are adding a field trip in to, uh, at Harbor Creek High School. And that's at no cost to us, they'll assume the cost of that. And then 4.06, our field trip updates, as you see from time to time. This is a debate, a robotics Walnut Creek, and then three ROTC, ROTC field trips whose venue has changed.
Thank you. Our final item is the PDE Data Summit Conference.
Uh, and something that we've sent teachers to every year, we're excited to send six of our folks back to this conference this upcoming year. We have two of our administrators, Kelly Brezak and Brigida Anthony, who presented last year. They're being asked to present again, uh, so we'll be sending the both of them. We'd also like to send, uh, three of our teachers, one from each grade band, or excuse me, two from elementary and one from middle, and one of our curriculum supervisors as well to the state conference. It's a relatively low cost for us at the end of the day, and there's a lot of good information and a lot of good networking that happens at this conference.
If I may add to that, for that conference, we opened it up to any teachers who are part of, currently part of the district level data team, and these were the ones who took us up on it for this year. But there'll be others in the future who will want to go that are part of that committee because I believe there's 26 or 27 on that committee currently.
That takes us to item 5.01, Instruction and Student Services, Questions from the Public. No one asking to, asking questions, and so we'll move on to 6.01. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the Instruction and Student Services Committee meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quibby. Moving on to Personnel Policy Committee and Chairman Brink.
Thank you. I know I have some big shoes to fill, so I'll do my best. Item 1.01, roll call. Bernie Senek, we have a roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Brink?
Here.
Mr. Kabilka?
Here.
And Mr. Dean?
Here.
Thank you. Item 1.02, approval of the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Kind of a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And 2.01, Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting Minutes for November 11th, 2024. I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes. Kind of a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have six items for action tonight. Item 3.01, Policy 005, Organization First Reading.
Yes, so this revised policy comes out of a court case, reflects the United States Court of Appeals, Third Circuit Decision in the Montemuro versus Jim Thorpe Area School District. And it just changes some of the nomenclature and there changes, uh, the policy regarding officers was revised to appropriately address the court decision, as well as appointments was revised to generally state that removal of an appointee will be based on the terms of a contract or the provisions of applicable law. So it was just, uh, becoming up to date with some of the litigation that came out.
Thank you. Item 3.02, Policy 823, Opioid Antagonist First Reading.
Uh, this is, uh, similar to that, uh, formerly it was titled, uh, naloxone, so they got rid of the name brand. Um, and then with Act 135 of, of 2022, it, there's some updated definitions in regard to drug overdose medication in that the state also refers to it now as the opioid antagonist. So a lot of minor language revisions to kind of clarify that as well.
Item 3.03, Policy 626, Federal Fiscal Compliance First Reading.
These were just upgrades and, and the adjustments with the cost. So, uh, the PA state quotation threshold went from 12,200 to 12,900, and it's reflected, as well as the PA state bid threshold was changed from 22,500 to 23,800.
Like to make a motion that we approve items 3.01 through 3.03, and move those forward to the school board meeting at the end of the month. Kind of a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 3.04, January 13th Personnel Report. For Asbury, we have a resignation of a Special Education Assistant Life Skills Support. We have a change of status for Title I Educational Assistant, Special Edu, to a Special Education Assistant Life Skills Support. We have a leave of absence for a fifth grade teacher and a third grade teacher. And a rescinded offer for a Special Education Assistant Life Skills Support. Bell Valley, we have a resignation of a Title I Educational Assistant. We have a change of status for a third grade teacher, a third grade teacher long-term substitute. At Chestnut Hill, we have a recommendation for a second grade teacher long-term substitute. Change of status for an admin officer elementary to assistant principal elementary. We have an interim assistant principal elementary to guidance counselor. At Grandview, we have a retirement of an academic interventionist after 33 years of service. Thank you for those years. Tracy, we have a resignation of a Special Education Assistant Emotional Support. We have a recommendation for Special Education Assistant Emotional Support. Also have a recommendation for an educational assistant part-time. We have a rescinded offers, office, offer for an educational assistant. Walnut Creek, we have a retirement of an eighth grade math teacher after 32 years of service. Thank you for your service. Resignations, we have a Special Education Assistant Life Skills Support. We have a change of status for a music teacher. Also have a change of status for an eighth grade special education teacher, learning support long-term substitute. At Westlake, we have a retirement of a sixth grade language arts teacher after 33 years of service. Thank you for your service. We have a sabbat, a sabbatical for a sixth grade math teacher. At JS Wilson, we have a retirement of a building principal secretary. We have a resignation of Special Education Assistant Emotional Support. We have a recommendation for a Special Education Assistant Emotional Support. Also for JS Wilson, we have a change of status, the guidance secretary to building principal secretary. We have a correction of a Special Education Teacher Learning Support Long-Term Substitute. Mill Creek Education Center, we have a recommendation for a temporary professional contract to professional contract. We have five board-approved volunteers. We have first student employment activity for monitors to driver. We also have the 2024, 2025 athletic supplements. In 2024, 2025, department chairs. Also have a termination of a maintenance coordinator. Like to make a motion that we move the personnel report to the committee of the whole meeting tonight. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 3.05, Hosted Services Agreement with the IU 13.
So we're pretty excited to bring forward this hosted services agreement. For those of you who are unaware, we manage the clearances, um, not only for our roughly 1,000 employees, but we manage the clearances for every single outside contractor that we have. So that means everybody that comes in to work on a window, uh, do any of our services, volunteers, then they stay on file for five years. And with that, um, there are close to 2,500, between 2,500 and 3,000, depending on when they expire. And currently, those were all just being tracked with a spreadsheet. As you can imagine, that is not the most efficient or effective way of managing 3,500 clearances for individuals that could expire at any point. So, um, this is a contract to, uh, we already contracted with IU 13 for their Act 168, which is that act that was passed in order to make sure if somebody was terminated from another district- Which is that act that was passed in order to make sure if somebody was terminated from another district or separated from another district for another reason, they would have to let us know. Uh, and they also have a compliance, uh, add on, uh, that we would be able to utilize, uh, to help. And that would send notifications, uh, to all those individuals as well as their employers. So if, um, you know, we have a outside contractor and they have, you know, their contractors that they have. Um, it'll let the, their HR office know that, hey, you know, the individuals that you have working on windows here at this building, their clearance are going to expire in ninety days, sixty days, thirty days. So it's, uh, helps to make things a little bit more efficient on an operations end as well as ensure our compliance. So, uh, we're excited to bring this contract. We felt that it was, uh, you know, pretty affordable add on. And so we wanted to bring this forward so we could start utilizing it, uh, at the end of the month.
Item three point zero six revised job descriptions.
The revised job descriptions that we have here, um, piggyback on, uh, one of our initiatives in terms of aligning, uh, all of our, uh, qualifications that we have for all of our salary bands and ensuring internal equity as well as having the qualifications for each. It also updates a lot of antiquated language, uh, that we've had in job descriptions that haven't been done, uh, revised in, in a number of years. So this ensures that level of equity is also provides a, uh, more accurate representation of the responsibilities from all of these roles. Um, so there are thirty six of them, um, that to, to review between now and the end of the, uh, as we kind of move forward. Um, recognize that it's a lot, but, uh, un- unfortunately this is one of those tasks that just needs done. It was a big effort by a lot of departments to make sure that all of these were aligned and using the appropriate language and responsibilities. So thank you for reviewing these.
Items three point, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items one, three point zero five and three point zero six. And move those to the school board meeting at the end of the month. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
We have one question for you about three point zero six. Some of the positions report to what would make sense for a chain of, of operational hierarchy. Other positions are superintendent or designate. And it's a little, why are they not all following the same concept? Like if they're IT, they report to the IT director. If they are finance, they report to the finance chief. But if they're grounds crew, they report to the superintendent. When they, they report to the engineer. Or should they all be superintendent designate? Why did we distinguish one group, sets of employees as superintendent and other groups are specific in positions?
Some of, uh, some of the positions that were, had, had that revision done, uh, followed our org chart that we had that was, that was passed. Other positions that were, uh, more generic, um, we left the supervisor more generic and I will leave it at that.
This from a consistency, we either trust John to make all the designations or we don't. I mean, at the end of the day.
Well, we wanted to give ourselves a level of flexibility, um, if perhaps those positions look different in terms of a reporting structure moving forward.
Yes, that's why I would ask that you call superintendent or designate opposed to just. We're either going for full flexibility or we're going for partial flexibility. And I don't think the intention, we wanted to be flexible some places, but not other places. Want to move the org chart then it should be all or nothing, not half in, half out.
Right, yeah, understood. We can make those.
Observation.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item four point zero one, information items, we have no informational items this evening. Five point zero one, questions from the public. How many questions from the public? Item six point zero one, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Well, there's any discussion?
Nice job, Mr. Brink.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, first one's out of the waves, mate. It's good. Good job, good job. Okay, moving on to the fi- final, uh, committee meeting this evening, it'll be finance and operations. And I'll be, uh, handling, uh, this agenda this evening and all the agendas for the rest of the year. Um, first one, attorney senate, one point zero one roll call.
Mr. Winchell.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Linder.
Here.
And Mrs. Peskow.
Here.
And one point zero two approval of the agenda, can I have approval of the, this evening's the finance operations committee meeting agenda?
Motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Two point zero one, the finance operation committee meeting minutes for November, the eleven toward the page there. At two thousand twenty four, I put that in the form of a mo- I have a motion, can I have a second?
A motion.
Okay, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, that motion passes. Okay, moving on, item three for action items. Uh, three point zero one is the HHSDR agreement exterior restoration project. And this proposals for the service related to the exterior restoration work for Asbury Elementary School, Walnut Creek Middle School, Tracy Elementary School, McDowell High School. McDowell Intermediate High School, Chestnut Hill Elementary School, JS Wilson Middle School, Mill Creek Education Center, maintenance building, first student building, bus repair garage and food warehouse. I'll ask Mr. Gallagher to make some comments, but first I'd like a motion to, uh, move forward, give a motion. Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Gallagher.
Yes, so we were, uh, if you recall, we had already done four of the buildings. Um, and that's actually going out to bid, uh, starting next week, uh, that goes in the paper. Um, but after we secured that grant, uh, for up to two point nine million dollars, uh, that moves up the timeline for the rest of the buildings. Um, so the goal is to get the design done for the rest of the buildings, uh, cause obviously we're going to move forward with doing all of it. We feel we will have adequate money to do all of it. It is always the plan to do all of it. Um, this is just moving it quicker. Um, so we would like to get HHSDR started on the designs for the rest of the buildings. Uh, and then we will see when the bids come in and how much workload we can put on some of those restoration companies this, uh, this summer. Uh, and figure out how to get the rest of the buildings accomplished. So that's what this proposal is for, is to get the rest of the design done for, uh, those exterior restoration projects.
Do you have an estimated cost? Cause they're, they're based on a percentage that comes in.
Yeah.
The percentage is within reason for, did you standard it? Do we have a window of what we, this work is?
We don't, and that's where the four buildings, when we get a bid and will tell us where we're at, they do not feel we're going to be that close to the two point nine million, um, with the four buildings that we currently have now that we haven't gotten to the rest of them. So there could be a building that's got some serious restoration that needs done. Um, but we feel very confident that we have enough money and we will make sure we have enough money, uh, to cover everything. That's where we didn't want to slow down the other four. Um, but we do want to get started on the rest of the buildings because that's a lot of work to put that together. And we don't really have a firm timeline yet on how quickly we have to spend that grant. And so the goal was to get it, get it moving, uh, quickly and try to get that all done.
Comment from doing this on buildings. Don't be cheap. Make sure that you see sightlines for where you have to go because once you go restore exterior restoration and you decide that this is the line. You can never undo the line. So make sure that the, the light breaks the right way in the building. Make sure you even don't kind of, they can choose blocked areas here and there because it will always look like you slapped a Band-Aid on.
No, and that's where we've been, yeah, there's been a lot of discussion on how far to go. And then in all honesty, uh, they were pretty impressed with how well our buildings did look, especially the first four that they looked at. But I still wanted to make sure that we did like the twenty year, uh, you know, put, put the coating on it and all that kind of stuff. So we're, we're going to take care of all of that and then we have unit numbers in there. Um, we're going to clean up all of the grouted buildings that were identified as needing that done. Um, and then we will repoint brick where it's necessary. So it's nice, we have a nice, uh, chunk of money to do it. Um, I assume that's what you're referring to is just making sure that we get it all done.
So if you're going to pick a spot on the building, take it out of lentil, don't break it, two bricks above the lentil. You saved a couple, you know, a thousand dollars because you didn't announce obvious that that was the break.
Right, right.
Someone with a good eyesight for color for the grout. Cause that is always the most notorious problem. Think the grout's the right color grout when you look at it in light and then it gets up on the building and it's thirty feet in the air. Isn't the same color from thirty feet in the air at that angle.
I was thinking Dr. Kavanaugh would be perfect for that.
Is that the all designate piece again?
Or is designate?
Don't be shy to hang that grout, get up on the lift and put it up in the air.
Gotcha, thank you.
Send you pictures of bad decisions.
All right.
Any other discussion? Okay, uh, this will be moved on to the board meeting. So, uh, we've had a motion, second, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, three point zero two, also from Mr. Gallagher. Um, this is a proposal which, um, is twenty five thousand dollars for the study. In an estimate between twenty five thousand and three five thousand for the demographic study. And again, this is something that really was part of the strategic planning committee and prior discussions. We heard more about that when Mr. Old Tool talks about the, uh, strategic plan. But the proposal is the study of five elementary schools to address the need for additional educational space. The study will provide options to address that need as well as guidance on how much space may be needed. Um, so can I have a motion to, uh, to accept this?
Make a motion.
Have a second. Any discussion, Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, so, uh, I know we've been talking quite a bit about, um, in addition to an elementary school or a couple of elementary schools, depending on where this study comes out. So this is a, uh, proposal, uh, to go through all of that. So some of the highlights, uh, we decided that, uh, it would be beneficial to get a full analysis of all five exterior buildings, uh, or elementary buildings, uh, to make sure that, uh, just to get a full picture of where, where we're utilizing our space in each of the elementary buildings. Before we go making a large decision on, uh, a renovation somewhere or addition somewhere or multiple locations. We want to make sure that there's equity among all of the buildings, uh, and we know where we're truly at with space and what we need moving forward. So that's a big piece of this. Uh, there's also quite a few other things as you can see in the proposal. Uh, and in the end, they will come out with, um, some enrollment projections, um, in utilizing the demographic study. If that's something we decide to move forward with. Um, and then also schematic plans, cost estimate, and they will also do a code review to ensure that, um, you know, some of the more unforeseen things that, uh, like parking requirements. You know, any changes to the building is all going to have to get approved by BIU. Um, and we don't, we want to try to find all of those hidden, hidden large ticket items that could cause us issues down the road. So there will be an emphasis on that. Um, and then unfortunately we weren't able to get a finalized, uh, demographic cost. Um, but we do feel very confident that it will be between twenty five and thirty five thousand dollars. And I'm hoping by the end of this week, we have a finalized number, uh, from, uh, demographer. Any other questions?
Okay.
So our recommendation is to move forward with the demographer, which brings us up to a maximum cost of sixty thousand dollars.
Thank you, and this will be on the, uh, board agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes, thanks, Mike. Moving on, three points, uh, zero three, and this will be moved to the committee of the whole meeting this evening. The settlement agreement, uh, uh, a mutual release of claims between the Pennsylvania Leadership Charter School and the Mill Creek Township School District. The same will be included on the committee of the whole, uh, agenda this evening. Have a motion to move forward.
Motion.
Have a second. Discussion, Mr. Old Tool.
Um, yes, it, it's clear that, uh, PDE is catching up from roughly ten years ago in terms of, uh, disputes related to charter school subsidy withholding. So, um, this should be the last one that we have as we had a couple more in the fall. And, uh, this was the last one that we have on our books as being outstanding. So we are settling this one for roughly two hundred and twenty five dollars, I believe.
Two hundred and.
Twenty five dollars.
Okay.
One moment, I actually, I'll give you the exact amount.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, aye? Okay, that passes. Okay, moving on to three point zero four, this also will be moved to the board meeting, the Mill Creek Tax Collector Compensation, uh, for the twenty six to twenty nine, two thousand twenty six through two thousand twenty nine, can I have a motion move forward?
A motion.
Second, okay, discussion, Mr. Old Tool.
Um, yes, it, it's, uh, state law that, uh, it, the school district should have established the tax collector's compensation prior to the election. And I believe that is in the February of that election year. And therefore our tax collector, uh, Lynn Case Crager has submitted the proposal that you, as you see in front of you. Uh, the percentage increases for the next four years.
Okay. Any questions, discussion from the committee?
Do you feel comfortable with those percentages?
I do, because this last year, this last contract was zero for all four years.
Thank you.
Given the inflationary environment, three percent's not bad at all.
Other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, I vote aye. Three point zero five, child development budget and rates for school year twenty five, twenty six. Um, budget which revenue an amount of eight hundred fifty four thousand, six hundred forty three dollars and thirty one cents and expense in the amount of eight hundred forty four, six twenty nine point six nine. In addition to approving the budget rates. Uh, they are approved, uh, for the preschool at a daily rate of forty five dollars and seventy cents with only five days a week available as a participation option. Have a motion to move forward.
Motion.
Okay, discussion, Mr. Old Tool.
Um, yes, you can see the adjustments, uh, related to the budget for revenue. Where we are asking to keep the rate relatively consistent. We know that our rate that we, uh, are not consistent, the same as this current fiscal year. Yeah, uh, we know that our rates, one of the higher rates within Erie County. Um, we think moving to four classrooms will allow us, uh, giving us a ninety percent capacity for twenty five tuition paying families. That in addition to the fifty two pre-K count slots will allow this fund to be at least not losing money year over year.
Mr. Old Tool, can we put the spreadsheet up on the screen?
Yeah, Hunter, do you?
Just so we can go over that real quick for the viewing public.
Can you zoom in, Hunter? So, uh, while that's being done, just to give a, uh, prerequisite here is, is we ended last fiscal year by losing little under roughly two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we project to lose about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars out of this fund for this current fiscal year. And so the modifications that we're requesting, that, that we're recommending moving forward, uh, should allow this fund to be solvent as we continue to move forward, um, for the future.
Okay, any further discussion? Committee or board members?
That budget's based on a ninety percent?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
Ninety percent tuition pay. So basically take eighty minus fifty two times ninety percent, not ninety percent of the total.
Ninety percent of twenty eight.
Correct.
Okay, any other discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, Aaron. Okay, three point zero six, CoStar salt request. Approval, looking for approval to move forward to the board meeting of the CoStar salt request twenty five, twenty six. Uh, can I have a motion move forward?
Motion.
Second, okay, Aaron?
Uh, again, annually we bring this contract forward. This is our salt for plowing, uh, the plows, sidewalks and all the parking lots, et cetera. So, uh, this is a recurring item that we see annually.
How are we doing for salt this year?
We've had some, uh, hiccups in terms of delivery, uh, but we're all right, we're, we're getting there, it's cold.
Yep, I got you. Any other discussion?
When we purchase this through CoStars, are we buying in conjunction with the township?
No.
Have we ever explored buying in conjunction with the township? Cause I'm sure the township uses a lot more salt than us and we might, we might save a dollar a pound, but there's still an opportunity.
Kind of like the paving we, yeah.
I'll reach out, uh, you know, we've explored other avenues of kind of bidding out with the township, but salt has not been one. Um, so I'll reach out to find out.
Yeah, we kind of did the agreement on the paving part of it, so.
Yeah.
It might get something, sure. A good, good idea, I think. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of moving forward, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Move forward. Three point zero seven, accounts payable report. Uh, it's accounts payable report, payroll report, December the twenty seventh of twenty twenty four. Payroll report, December thirteenth of twenty twenty four, payroll report, December thirteenth and extra. Payroll report, December thirteenth, another extra and payroll report, November the twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. Can I have a motion move that forward to the board meeting at the end of the month?
Motion.
Have a second, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, okay, we'll move forward with that, thank you. Now, three point zero eight is the Mill Creek Township School District Activity Account Officers for the twenty four, twenty five school year. Can I have a motion to move forward with that?
Motion.
Okay, uh, those are for the McDowell High School and McDowell Intermediate High School. They have updates to the student activity account officers. They have updates to the Student Activity Account Officers were approved to in the November the 25th, 2024. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Aye. Okay, move forward. Okay, the next is the 3.09, the Mill Creek Education Foundation Grants. Or is it? Oh, thank you. Just briefly, just wanted to say the school, the grant title and the grant originator. The total is $9,347. Bell Valley for the Depth of Swings, the grant originator is Ashley Oldford. So again, I'd like to appreciate, to send a thank you to all the grant originators for taking the initiative to apply for these grants. Westlake, the 3R signage from Raleigh Winston. M I H S Wellness Room from Brigida Anthony Bell Valley. Breakout E D U Kits, Tina Furman, Grandview, The Crayon Man and Author Visit, Christian Stravinsky, Walnut Creek. Hydro phonics in the Classroom, Amy Stern, M E C, World Autism Day, Mary Triana. M I H S District Art Show Gallery, Jess Aliso and Jen Dunham. And Westlake, the Trauma Informed Book Study, De'Anthe McCowdery and Shannon Patton. And Grandview Dynamic Drumming from Mariana Bernstein. So that's again, a total of 9,347. Like to thank all of the originators for taking the initiative to get this funding to enhance the offerings for each respective grant and school. So can have a motion to accept these and move these forward.
Motion.
Have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to IM4 Finance and Operations Committee Informational Item. 4.01 Strategic Plan and State of Operations, Mr. Old Tool.
Good evening. So as we get started here, is, we're here to present our strategic plan. And I wanted to give a little framework of how we arrived to where we did. So I think it was in January of last year, we developed a committee that had individuals from, ranging from Erie Insurance, Penn State Baron, some other local accounting firms and other members within the district and some other members of the community participate in a committee to develop a strategic plan for us to focus into the future. This plan is the outcome of all those efforts. And I'm here to present that here tonight in addition to where we find ourselves mid-year across several operational departments. So our primary objective here within our strategic plan was to enhance educational support services, optimize resource utilization, ensure long-term sustainability and growth, and align this plan with the district's vision moving forward. We're going to go in, we have about 10 different major points to the strategic plan. First one being our transportation services. We are currently out to bid right now. We have mandatory pre-bid meeting on January 21st. And then we expect the bids back in early February for transportation services next year. And we're hoping to secure reliable transportation services for the future. That will be coming forward after contract negotiations. The contract will be coming forward to the board in roughly March with the recommended contractor for the next several years. We're also looking to add an alternative education program that is cost-effective and high-quality. And we hope to implement that by next school year. The main purpose of this is, we know right now at Percy's House, we're spending quite a bit of money. And again, that we need some additional slots for alternative education placement. So we're hoping running our own internal program allows us greater flexibility for the future. Third major point, Mr. Gallagher just already kind of talked about the feasibility study. So that's part of this is the goal is to determine long-term enrollment trends as well as look at our elementary buildings. Currently, our elementary buildings are really getting close to capacity, if not there. And a lot of that is a result of just enrollment trends in terms of our special education population and those ratios being less than 1 to 20, 25 that we typically use in our elementary buildings. So space is becoming a premium. And therefore, we need to take a look at our elementary buildings specifically. And that feasibility study that was just discussed is going to help us achieve that. Revenue generation. No one wants to raise taxes, so we tried to find alternative ways to raise revenue. And some of this is these areas and some of the action points being exploring naming right opportunities for our facilities. Much like we have with the Hoss up, up at the manufacturing lab. What other areas can we explore naming rights for to receive revenue? Annual capital campaign funds. We need, part of what we already discussed back in December is establishing a new foundation that is going to be focused solely on capital campaign funding related to extracurricular facilities. Therefore, we're not using taxpayer dollars to update a football stadium or a basketball court, etc. Improve access billing reimbursement. We've been talking a lot about this and implementing ways that we can improve that, that billing reimbursement on an annual basis. Optimizing usage of district properties. Are we going to be using the Montclair Park? If not, can we sell that? If we are having a purpose for it, let's start to use that for our mission or whatever purpose that we deem fit moving forward. Establish consistent billing practices of our facilities such as with MYAA Booster Clubs, etc. Those that want to rent our facilities. Let's make sure we have consistent practices moving forward. And creating educational elements for entrepreneurial opportunities for our students. Good example, that would be our manufacturing lab and our student-run manufacturing. They're able to generate revenue that is going to help maintain the replacement of that equipment longer term. How can we expand that out, but also giving our students a great experience in doing so? Another point for us is innovation and efficiency. We'd like to reduce costs through innovation, innovative projects and improve management. One area is exploring solar and wind energy projects while using available grants. Give you a good example of this is, I have no, the, the power grid related to Asbury and Walnut Creek is not very good. I mean, the power goes out quite frequently. If we were to explore using solar to eliminate that, could that maintain the life of our equipment? Because as the power coming in and out, that, that takes a toll on the equipment that we just installed into these buildings. Another area is, or as well as the energy efficiency that you would have with the consumption related to generating your own energy with solar. Excess or assess benefits of autonomous cleaning equipment. Ever, anybody's ever gone through Sam's Club and you see that machine mocking around cleaning the thing? Why not us look at that opportunity for, as well? Streamlining administrative tasks using technology. A good example of that is we streamlined our registration process. Can we use, can we better leverage our technology in those ways to improve these administrative tasks as we're moving forward and allowing us to focus on other things? Transitioning to paperless systems, a good example, that would be going paperless with our accounts payable. While that would be ideal, it's not going to be fully paperless. I don't see that going, but at the end of the day, writing a check and putting a postage stamp on that and sending it out is an archaic way of doing business as well as paying your bills. Is, are there ways for us to continue to move forward? And we've already approved that and we're working through, we're getting pretty close to implementing this. Where it also paying with a credit card generates a rebate. So not only are we reducing our costs, we're generating revenue through rebate. Minimize them printing usage by student devices. And then a continued evaluation of C E P, C E B P being the community eligibility provision within our federal, within our food service program, meaning all meals are free. Right now, we're not there, but we're going to continue to evaluate that. Security maintenance. Develop a security inspection plan. We already have a good start on that, but how can we continue that to ensure our buildings are safe as we move forward? Improve our work order management. Advanced equipment and facility replacement plan. Creating staffing, create a staffing analysis for 25-26 budget. Refine or preventative maintenance programs. Utilize equipment management systems as designed and improve our building and grounds appearances. Those are some of the focus points that we want from our security and maintenance teams as we move forward. Data, security and IT. We want to improve our cyber security posture. It's not uncommon for many different places to be breached and personal protected information or other information that is protected being stolen. What are we doing to protect this information? Today, day and age, there's many districts around us that have been breached. Thankfully, we are not one of those. And you have to put in a plan in place in order to secure that data for the future. But as well as protecting it and how are you going to recover it? So we want to be ahead of that game and improve our cybersecurity as much as we possibly can. So we're not in a position where we have been breached. Complete CIS implementation group, that's part of the same. Develop an incident response plan that would be if we ever did have a breach. Implement an employee cybersecurity training program. A lot of these breaches aren't coming from someone just hacking into your firewall through your network. Most of the time, it's an individual getting an email and clicking a link. And so the training program that is going to need for all staff is pretty critical in improving that cybersecurity protection. Migrate autonomous, migrate automated student account and management systems. Document, document IT infrastructure and procedures. Develop a security plan and identify insurance specifications annually. So the good news is, as we protect our systems more thoroughly, in return, we should also be able to identify that to the insurance companies and pay less than premium. That would be the hope in regards to this. So a big focus here on cybersecurity as we move forward to the future years. Curriculum and resources. I know Mr. Murdock, I already discussed earlier today about developing a committee to review the resources that we're utilizing from IT perspective and instruction and making sure that we're not duplicating efforts, etc. So that's part of the committee that we're going to develop following a framework as we continue to move forward. I'll just, you want to go or you want me to keep going?
You're doing great.
Thanks. So part of HR is workforce development and human resources here is developing a salary structure for non-MEA positions. Also formulating a workforce development plan and design onboarding and orientation plan. We want a well-prepared workforce that's able to come in and we're able to put them in a position to be successful right from the start. And so that's a big goal of ours as we continue to move forward into the future as well. Lastly, you know, no strategic plan is perfect, especially as it extends years. We've got to be able to pivot, we're going to monitor this on a monthly basis. We're going to, we'll report it annually or where we stand, it'll align with our budget. But if we need to make adjustments, we, we'll present that, make the adjustments as needed. And really, that cycle will continue to repeat itself until we've completed the plan. More details related to that plan is in part of the word document that I had uploaded. This is just a really high-level summary. We have very specifics on targeted dates or measurables of how we plan to achieve these goals as we move forward. Are there any questions regarding the strategic plan? I'd like to thank everybody involved in developing the strategic plan. Includes Mr. Linder, Mr. Lintel as part of the board, as well as all the members that, from the district. I mean, it took, what we had over 12, 15 meetings just to talk about it. So I'd really, I really appreciate everybody's time in developing this as we move forward. Okay, I'm going to jump right into the state of the district and where we are from an operational perspective. It's a given that we are all working towards that strategic plan that I just discussed. But those are high-level things. We're still working on some other areas as well to improve. So this, the rest of those presentations aimed at what else are we doing to improve or where do we stand? So related to IT, we've restructured the department. To be more aligned, to setting us up from, as I talked about, security being a big issue, a position designed for security. We've also just put ourselves in a better position to be successful. We are doing security evaluations in a camera project. We've implemented Costado, which allows parents to monitor district technology usage at home. So if you're bringing home a Chromebook, we can monitor it while you're on our network here. But there was no way for a parent to be able to see what you were looking up from home. Now this program allows the parent to be able to monitor what their children are doing from their actual home. We're, sorry, I lost. Updated, we updated the workspace for our IT technicians to allow for greater efficiency. We continue to improve the network at renovated buildings. Over 2,000 Chromebooks were replaced at the high school, third, sixth, as well as staff. Over 500 iPads were replaced for kindergarten, 65 CAD machines. Another 40 CAD laptops were replaced. 290 laptops were purchased to replace for our elementary, middle guidance staff. And we've also, part of our E-Rate program, E-Rate's funded every five years. So we tried to update our network equipment every five years. Part of that was 384 Wi-Fi access points were purchased out of the funding and installed. This is just a quick data point here. Over 5,000 work orders have been completed since July 1 of this year. If you can look on the far left-hand side, I know that's small, I was trying to blow it up. But a line share of those, roughly 2,000, relate to Chromebooks. And as I talked about, security training plan being another part, the left-hand side where the green makes up most of the bar here. That relates to security and user concerns. So our data is also pointing to the fact that training will be a big part of our focus moving forward. In addition to focusing on the strategic plan as we move forward, we're also going to look at Bitwarden, which is a software that allows us to store our passwords. Therefore, if we should have nobody putting a password on a sticky note or in your notebook and putting it in the drawer. I mean, this would allow you to store your passwords safely. And we're looking at our ticketing system and a possible change as well as what metrics can we pull from that system to really help us look at how we're doing? Are we being real efficient? What, what are we spending most of our time on? For example, we could see that that was Chromebooks. But what part of the Chromebooks was the Chromebook screen? Was it more, so how can we utilize our data to really have a, help us have a better understanding of what product to purchase? Or should we be purchasing insurance, etc? Implementation of data usage forms for future vendors. Those are a few of the goals outside of what was embedded in the strategic plan. Maintenance updates. I'm just going to keep going. We, long story short, 8,107 work orders completed in 2024. It's quite a bit. We continue to expand or continue to expand and refine the planned maintenance programs as we invest in these buildings. We implement a rather robust preventative maintenance program in order to maintain this equipment. You can see about 1,700 planned maintenance work orders were completed in 2024 alone. And as mentioned, continue to work towards the strategic plan as you already saw the feasibility study brought forward today. Let's talk about a little bit about construction. So on the, on the left-hand side is a recap of the construction projects that occurred in 2024. Had the Phase 1 of the McDowell. That's a three-year project, so we have Phase 2 this summer, Phase 3 the following summer. You had Phase 1 of Elementary, or Asbury Elementary, that will be wrapped up this upcoming summer. Phase 2 of Tracy Elementary, which completed that building. This, and then you had Phase 3, which pretty much completed M I H S for the most part. We're going to come back in and do some auditorium work this summer. And then we completed the baseball softball project. Right-hand side, these are the projects that are coming this summer. Whether they get all done in this current summer or it maybe, it might be two years from now. And I mean, McDowell's still going to be three years from now. But overall, you can see the list of those projects. We've talked a lot about them, some of them, bids have already been approved such as Asbury, McDowell, MEP renovations. I talked about the theater upgrades been approved, the window replacements going forward. We did write a grant for that. We talked about ADA restrooms, exterior restoration today. But I'm not going to bore everybody reading through that, but that's quite an extensive list. Outcomes of these construction projects. And when I And when I, when we talk about this, is I would like to remind everybody that Ridgefield, Chestnut Hill and McDowell didn't have AC before. They now have AC. And why do I say that? Because that's important when you're talking about energy consumption. And then in addition to that, we made the decision in 2023 to control humidity over the summer for all of our buildings. So that does require, rather than shutting them down, it requires additional energy consumption as well. However, if you look on the right-hand side, you can see our energy consumption has been being reduced. Therefore, that's a clear indication telling us that our systems are working as designed and we are actually saving energy efficiency in the systems as expected. The bottom bullet point on the left-hand side, it's about a 10.7% reduction from 2019, 2023. That's about $100,000, over $100,000 a year. So while these renovations are costing money, cousin Mike a lot of gray hair, it does save us a lot of money in the end, which is what we expected.
All right, Aaron, I'll give you a break.
Thank you.
So that we just wanted to provide a mid-year update from the HR department. Been doing a lot of projects and working on a lot of stuff to increase our level of effectiveness and the efficiencies within that department. So just wanted to couple, hit a couple of high level things here. I apologize for the small font. It was much like that high school teacher that lets you use a note card on the test and you write super small to get it on there. Aaron told me only had two slides, so I had to cram everything on here that I could. So I completed our, we completed a comprehensive wage structure and internal equity analysis, which you saw a lot of those job descriptions that goes into that next point, too. Really wanted to align everything and make everything as equitable as possible, as well as externally competitive. So we worked to revise all of our job descriptions to accurately reflect that. Employment tiers, titles, qualifications for entry, appropriate job responsibilities following into that scope. We worked to finalize eight workplace condition plans agreements. And a lot of that was some consolidation moving from 11 to seven. When we, when I first got on the beginning of last year, when an individual was hired, they were input into 12 different systems. So their employee information was input separately 12 different times. And we were able to use a level of integration with the data team. With a big shout out to that, to the data team, because we were able to move that down to five and that was no easy task. And so that streamlined a lot of our platforms and we're working to continually integrate that with the business office and we're working hand in hand with them to make our systems more efficient and more accurate. Talk about the bid process. We had, we completed the bid process, achieving completion within two and a half weeks, running 68 total bids so far this year. We're going to hopefully do it in about the same amount of timeframe as we move next year as well. Establish consistent leave protocols and procedures with some accessible flow charts to be forward-facing for our employees and our members to make things more accessible for them to, help them alleviate stress when you're going through a stressful time and you need to take a leave. How does it affect you and impact you? And we tried to do that for our members. We reestablished a workplace safety committee, which resulted in a 5% reduction in our worker, which will result in the 5% reduction in our workers' compensation premiums. We conducted an exhaustive position control audit and moved our employee files to a digital system, which again was no small task with 1,000 employees. Just a couple other updates, you know, just going to give you an idea of what we did this year. Through all that, we were able to successfully recruit and fully staff the district for the 24, 25 school year, before we did have a couple resignations in some educational assistance to start the year. But we were at zero at one point, which was awesome. We were able to automate acceptance letters and board letters through HR system. We've reviewed interview questions and we revised pretty much every single one, which for all of our different positions, as you can imagine, it's a lot. And we've done a lot with our employee engagement practices. There's a lot of, there's certain positions that have a lot of transients and that's pretty much industry standard with our educational assistance. And throughout the past 10 months, we've hired 140 individuals. Those are current positions, not added positions, but that's through retirements, resignations. Our sports teams have a lot of turnovers as well, educational assistance, custodians. So we see a lot with that. So we were able to hire 140 employees within the last 10 months. We helped create an employee guidebook for information accessibility. Again, how can we be forward-facing to make things more effective for our employees here? And then establish the workplace recognition. So we were able to do an exhaustive audit. I have to give kudos to our employee engagement coordinator, Mrs. Emily Ferguson. She went through every single employee file and found out what date they were hired so that we could accurately have that in our system. So we're able to meet everybody on their work aversaries and give them a token in terms of the years of service appreciation. And we implemented that this year. And it's just a really nice, you know, small token to say, you know, we appreciate everything that you've given to the district and to give it to them on their actual day of hire is pretty cool. So kudos to her for doing that, as well as recognizing retirements and other various accomplishments. We've been recognizing individuals when they get additional certifications or have big life events. And then lastly, we reinstated our Act 45 training, something that we used to have in the district, but kind of moved away from COVID really stopped, stopped us having, offering these programs for our administrators and we were able to bring them back. So we've been a busy department and we have stuff to work on as outlined in that strategic plan. So we're just going to keep on, keep on moving forward. So that's all I got on my two slides.
A lot. Thank you. Looking at the business office, I'm going to keep going. There's only three more slides here is the district received the excellence of financial reporting certificate for three years in a row, hoping for a fourth, that's a specific year. The business office hired three staff. These are replacement staff, not new staff, I want to clarify that. But the good news and then having that turnover, it's allowed for more cross-training within the department. So that was a good benefit out of that. We're working to improve asset, our asset management system. We continue to work with HR to integrate procedures and utilize technology, improve fee procedures for those who owe money or have a surplus. A good example is, there's a lot of people that graduate and they have $5 on their lunch account. I mean, we've been carrying these surpluses on. We've actually gone through everybody, asking individual families what they would like to do with the surplus, whether they want to check or donate it for a needy family. So that's just one example of how we're trying to improve these procedures moving forward. We've submitted and received competitive grants totaling over $3.7 million in this last fiscal year. It's pretty big. I mean, these were competitive, they're not guaranteed grants. The, we've additional grant management. This is important to note, I think, at the end of the day is when the state comes out and they've been giving additional funding, most of that's going through the ready-to-learn grant or some other grant where it requires a whole lot more work than just saying, thank you for the money, we're going to spend it how we want. You've got the monitoring that you have to do all your reporting you're supposed to say with. So as the state continues to give the districts more and more money, they're consistently pushing it through a grant procedure, which requires a whole lot of mandates in terms of reporting. Issued debt and managed bond funds, $37 million spent in one year. $37 million spent in one year is just about as much of 12 districts and IU V's overall budget. That is how much in construction. I mean, I can't say that enough. That's a lot of construction work in one summer that takes a lot of work from Mr. Gallagher in terms of contract management, the management of all the contractors themselves, the accounting on the backside, everybody involved, their custodians and cleaning. So I wanted to put that in a different perspective of that's a lot of spend in one summer where it's pretty much the size of most districts and IU V's total budget. And then we've been working towards the Gus Anderson Field project. Looking at the custodial department, we had new management, which has allowed us for improved accountability and operational effectiveness. We revised our inspection and evaluation procedures. We currently have three open positions. We continue to struggle with substitute process. We did, we really have no substitutes and we've been filling a lot of this with overtime. So part of the staffing analysis that we're hoping to have completed for this upcoming budget year will give some recommendations of how we can try to resolve this for the future. We've documented snow removal procedures and we've also improved our cleaning procedures in the training to our staff through our new supervisor, where we're using the correct solutions for cleaning and/or the equipment itself, which is in turn achieving a better result in the overall cleanliness of the buildings. Our food service department currently has four, seven, excuse me, seven open positions, four substitutes. We've added dishes to serve at the high school. We're no longer using disposable items at that moment in time. We've added additional POS locations for breakfast within our buildings for the buildings that are utilizing that. We're seeing a direct influence of about 2% increase in sales. Many families this year no longer qualify for free and reduced meals. I bring that up because they're through a COVID program. Many families that were right on the fringe would qualify for free are no longer on qualifying for free. That looks like it's going to translate to about $225,000 difference and from last year to this current fiscal year in our food service program. We're exploring adding TVs in the cafeterias to display menus. And we are currently out to bid. I expect it to be out in the next week or two for our food service contract for this upcoming year. Last department, transportation. We currently have 65 drivers, five of those drivers on leave for 66 routes. There are continued recruitment efforts and we are receiving out, well, first students receiving applications. Services, as I mentioned, are already out to bid. The bus patrol program, remind everybody that's the cameras that are on the buses and they'll send you a citation. It still continues to generate over $10,000 a month in revenue. That's how many, but hopefully this is getting out there and people are going to be more safer driving around these buses at the end of the day. Our buses, we know that it's continuing to be a struggle this year. A lot of our buses are late. However, there's a lot of other, not only driver shortages, we're looking at here. You're looking at our homeless transportations at a record high. And you're looking at some special education, transportation needs that we haven't seen in the past, whether working with Solbat, I mean, everybody's experiencing the driver shortage. And so we're all trying to do our best in transporting these kids to school. With that said, that is a lot of information, but that is the end. Are there any questions? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great presentation.
Well done.
Okay, moving on, item five, 501, questions from the public. Okay. Item six adjournment, Kevin, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, any discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You are adjourned. Thanks, everyone, all the committees this evening. Yay. Moving on to committee of the whole. Yeah, we take a deep breath or move forward. Okay, opening item, committee of the whole for January 13th, have a roll call Attorney Senate.
Mr. Brink.
Here.
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Mrs. Philbeck.
Here.
Mr. Kobilka.
Here.
Mr. Linder.
Here.
Mrs. Nussum.
Here.
Mrs. Pasquale.
Here.
Mr. Winchell.
Here.
Mrs. Winchell.
Here.
Dr. Kavanaugh.
Present.
And Attorney Senate is here.
Okay. 1.02, an executive session was held January 13th for the following purposes. Litigation, Prozen versus MTSD removal case, 1094 CD 2022 Commonwealth Court. Prozen and Eliot versus MTSD Sunshine 2022, 12699 Erie County Court of Common Police. Stoops versus MTSD EEOC 533-2023-0217, 124, 163 US District Court of Western District of Pennsylvania. Maynard and Sullivan versus MTSD Erie County Court of Common Please. And we also attorney client privilege, potential litigation vendor and personnel. And 1.03 approval of this evening's agenda. You have a motion to approve.
Motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, motion passes. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Permission to stand. One nation, one God.
Thank you. Moving on, item two, visitors. Do we have any visitors that like to speak? Moving on, item three, superintendent's report, Dr. Kavanaugh.
There's one item this evening that I already went through the Personnel Committee and I've asked the board to consider for 3.01, the January 13th, 2025 Personnel Committee Report.
Hey, thank you, Kevin. Motion to accept the January 13th, 2025 Personnel Committee Report.
Motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, passes. Item four, solicitor report.
Tonight, we have the settlement agreement, mutual release of claims in regard to the Tar School financing that was reviewed in the committee, seeking a motion to approve the same.
Take up a motion.
Motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, motion passes. Item five, old business, any old business? Hearing none, moving on to new business, any new business? Hearing none. Item seven, remarks, Northwest Tri County Intermediate Unit. As always, on the attachment of the agenda is the director's report from our previous meeting a few weeks ago. And just a couple, couple items on there, as I mentioned, but to Mrs. Means and Mr. Quibby, there's a couple of articles related to cell phones. Interest that I, also IU four, five, six and nine have launched the, no problem. Item four, five, six, nine have launched the Northwest PA STEM ecosystem. They build a central hub to connect organizations and individuals with a broader community or organization driven to help learners make connections by growing partnerships between schools, community work and global enterprise, enabling the development of STEM literacy and preparing them for future workforce demands in Northwest and North Central Pennsylvania. Also, the Secretary of Education, Pennsylvania Secretary of Education has resigned after nearly two years of service as Secretary of Pennsylvania Department of Education. Phil Sipt, he did step down effective December 6th. And Angela Federer, Executive Deputy Secretary of PA Department of Education will serve as interim acting secretary. Yes, and kind of relating back to Mr. Altua's presentation, that's a solar for schools grant program and now accepting applications. So kind of in line with, and that is it for the IU V report. Moving on to 7.02, Erie County Technical Report, Technical School Report. Mr. Limnor.
Quite the report tonight. December was a rather lengthy meeting going off your solar grant. The Erie County Technical Service School is going to be applying on a solar school grant in January to explore that is for a 0% loan through the state government. If they are approved, at which point it will come back to all 11 sending districts to approve that process. I think non-sol firms got to get some clarity on what that vote needs to be, whether it needs to be a simple majority or an absolute super majority of all. But it is a $3 million project. They're looking to install a 1.7 megawatt grid out there. I think it's roughly on five acres behind the school. It's about $5 million in savings over 20 years at the current energy rate. Solar assessments is going to be doing the, solar assessment is going to be done by generation 180, that has no cost. There is also the potential for a solar grant of $400,000. End of day, project going to cost three, end up saving about five, so it's going to be a net of two over the life of that if we use today's rates. So as long as that has been quite the conversation on where that grid is actually raised, going to be placed with regard to the back property that is potentially eligible to be sold. Should the district, the sending districts decide to do that, work with that property. Meeting changes, couple meeting changes in case any of you want to join us. On February 27th, there will be a noon lunch meeting, at which point I do believe that we're going to be inviting all the sending district school board directors to come out and to actually see what happens in a day in real time at the school. So I strongly encourage you to kind of put a marker on your calendar for the 27th of February. August is always a rough month to get people out, so they will be holding their August meeting on the 14th at noon, so that we can get the teachers in that business done early. And then December's meeting will be moved to 8:30. So we're going to try moving it around a little bit to make it a little bit more accessible to some people who can't always join us at 5:30, 6 o'clock on the Thursday. Very lengthy conversation on program expansion with regard to the school is looking, is it, the school is not looking, the school intends to add a heavy equipment and repair program. Their conversation, and John, you can attest, was. Their conversation, and John, you can attest, was very thorough and robust with regard to what the financial impact of the recent expansion and the expansion of this program. There was my understanding and agreement among all the superintendents that the program would be offered beginning the 26th, 27th, we'd wait one year. To go with that, our favorite topic, funding formula, is rearing its conversation again. The ECTS administration has been asked by numerous sending districts to review the current funding formula and to potentially hold the per pupil cost for one year to align, one, to let the districts catch up a little bit with the significant impact with the expansion. I can tell you that while we are seeing a decrease of enrollment, there are some districts, and I will single out Northeast in particular. I've seen a tremendous expansion of the number of students, plus 30, they are coming close to what we have. And we know that they don't have nearly the number of students that we have in our system. So there is a significant financial impact that our partners and other sending districts are struggling with right now. I know that that's to be determined whether or not a per pupil cost can be held, knowing that we have an established funding formula. They're also looking to place excess funds, the surpluses into a capital fund project for future projects to ease the burden on sending districts. I will tell you that the state funding has increased for career and technical schools over the past year. The director out there, Matt Weber, has done an amazing job with the entire administration team of writing grants. They have seen a significant surplus and opportunity, just like we have done diligent job getting grants. They have been aggressive in finding career and technical grants. So we are seeing some excess funds that also helped launch the heavy equipment program and cover those costs for a few couple of years. We bring on mind the equipment, if you can imagine, purchasing full-size construction dump trucks, front-end loaders and excavators. There's no small startup cost. So a lot going on there. And last thing is they are exploring a lease with Erie Community College, a long-term lease with them. So that will probably be coming before in the near future. I think some concerns that I've expressed is the concern for the co-sharing of the skill center, which is where Erie Community College is. But ECTS also uses that building for some of our programs. Historically, they have not been in the building at the same time. Moving forward, they will start to be in the buildings at the same time. And as, as programs for both organizations expand, we will see larger overlap of both sets of students in those net facility. Along with that long-term lease potentially, EC3 will most likely look for state funding to improve the facility. As they get state funding, it's going to then mean that the ECTS will also be required to do some upgrades to that structure, which then comes back to the sending districts for renovations. So there's a lot there. So they're definitely moving forward. There's a lot of progress. I think the takeaway from all this is that we have tremendous interest in the career and technical school from students. Enrollment is surging, community needs it at the point where some other decisions are going to have to be made here in the near future to continue to support the community. Last is they will be making up snow days on February 17th, March 17th. If you get any more snow, they will be making a horse no days elsewhere as well, is they have any left in the calendar.
Thanks for that thorough report. Great job. 7.03, school board remarks, any school board remarks? Now, I would just like to say that the single audit is, was advertised and is out for public review. And in February, that will be coming through committee and for the acceptance vote at the board meeting. And then also in February, just a heads up, Aaron will be starting the budget season. So here we, here we bring the overview of funding sources and how we compare with other districts in February. Any other committee, any other board members like to make comments before I turn over to Dr. Kavanaugh? Hearing none.
Okay, my message this evening is to the school board. As we celebrate school director recognition month this January, I'd like to take this opportunity to extend my heartfelt appreciation to each of you for your exceptional leadership and commitment to our students, our staff, and our community. While the contributions of the school board members are not always apparent to the public, they are vital to the success and development of our district. Your guidance plays a crucial role in the shaping of the future of our students, promoting a culture of collaboration, and ensuring our schools remain environments where learning and innovation can flourish. The time, energy, and thoughtful consideration you dedicate to making significant decisions have a positive impact on both our students and our broader community. Please remember that your contributions are valued not only in January, but throughout the entire school year. Your steadfast commitment to excellence in education, your readiness to make challenging decisions, and your passion for improving our district serves as an inspiration to those around you. It's truly an honor to collaborate with such a dedicated group of professionals. On behalf of all of our students, teachers, and staff, I extend our gratitude for your ongoing service, leadership, and vision. We look forward to continuing our partnership in strengthening our schools and ensuring the success of every student. So thank you to the nine of you this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, with that, we'll move on to 8.01, adjournment, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay?